We'll call the regular meeting of April 5th, 2022 to order. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Sean Douglas.
Here.
Michelle Hayes.
Here.
Brian Horvath. Jean Sensi.
Here.
Jeff Thompson.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Sean Douglas.
Yes.
Michelle Hayes.
Yes.
Jean Sensi.
Yes.
Jeff Thompson.
Yes.
Vote us 4-0.
All right, we'll move to board member reports. I'm going to talk briefly about our treasurer search. The Educational Services Center on our behalf has conducted meetings with our school board members, our superintendent, and our existing treasurer to develop a treasurer profile that identifies the key skill sets and experiences the next treasurer should possess. The ESC, again on our behalf, has conducted some surveys with the Ohio Department of Education with defined peer districts and Madison-identified peer district treasurer salary and compensation, currently being conducted to assist with determining the appropriate compensation range for the next treasurer. We hope to have a job posting within the next week and with a deadline for applications for May 6th with a start date of no later than August 1st. So that's sort of where we're at with the treasurer search at this point. Does anybody else have a report they'd like to give? All right, with that, we'll move to our public participation portion. Each speaker has five minutes to address the board. They were asked to address the board members in your comments to be respectful and we'll promise to return the favor. And our first speaker is Bryant Smith. We good?
Yeah. Good evening. My name's Bryant Smith. I'm a father, a concerned citizen, and a 30-year Madison resident taxpayer. Today, I am here to set the record straight regarding the last school board meeting that happened on March 1st. I've been attending these school board meetings, faithfully since beginning of the school year, and was an eyewitness to the recent board meeting where you people conspired to call the police on a concerned parent who had gone over her speaking time. You have justified your actions by attempting to criminalize her, even lying on record about her to cover your own shameful behavior. First, I want to make sure the public realizes that speaking over your time limit is, in fact, not a crime, nor is it not even an unusual occurrence at Madison School Board meetings. For example, on the board meeting right before the one in question, the board allowed both speakers to go well over their time with no issue whatsoever. In fact, one speaker spoke for a full eight minutes and no one ever cut her off or treated her rudely in any manner. You even engaged in an open back-and-forth conversation, let her go on and on until she had completely finished every last thing she wanted to say. Yet, at the very next board meeting, when another speaker had just reached her five-minute time, Michelle Hayes jumped in and gabbed the speaker, circumventing the role of the presiding officer, which is a potential violation of your own school board policy, PO 0163. From there, Sean Douglas attempted to cut the speaker off by instruct by cutting her microphone for about 5 minutes and 20 seconds, when the speaker did not stop talking. Jean Sensi, Michelle Hayes, and Sean Douglas were on record to have her removed by the police, all before she had gone even one minute over her time. Again, this is unprecedented behavior on the part of the school board members and administration appears to be in violation of the board policy, PO 169.1. At this point, Sean Douglas ordered the video cut so there would be no further record, and three of you, Jeff Thompson, Sean Douglas, and Michelle Hayes, walked out of your official seats in a flurry of chaos that was completely uncalled for. To make matters worse, the two of you did remain in your seats. Brian Horvath and Jean Sensi heckled the speaker like an out-of-control child with comments such as "nobody cares," "go sit down," and my personal favorite, blah, blah, blah. As a side note, I would like to point out just how disturbing I find the comment "nobody cares" made by Jean Sensi. The speaker was addressing concerns about the harm done to our children and the board's noncompliance for those to uphold the Constitution. To say that nobody cares over the well-being of our children and constitutionally of our school district policies is incredibly arrogant and deeply concerning. I tend to think, at least some of us care about the issues personally, I am extremely concerned that the public servants do not harm our children or break the laws you have sworn to uphold. I also care when you act like authoritarians, intimidating your constituents by calling the police and threatening them with criminal charges if they do not leave a public meeting. I'm also very concerned that since Michelle Hayes and Sean Douglas in particular have continued to threaten to take away the community's right to address their concerns through the public participation, and I thank you for this, portion of our school board meeting, if we don't toe the line and stay in our lane. Michelle Hayes even said, I quote, "sadly, we allow public participation as a board." Nice to know she thinks in some sort of tragedy the community has granted a short five minutes, a month to share their concerns with you. Frankly, the entire incident was shameful for the community, and I hope the community starts caring a whole heck of a lot more about who you people really are. Again, I'm here to set the record straight, so I'll continue. After cutting the camera and calling the police, you folks hid in the room and refused to come out until the speaker left. This was embarrassing to witness and also another potential policy violation of PO 0169.2, one of the open meeting sunshine law. The board and superintendent then threatened the speaker with criminal trespass, so she should not immediately leave the public meeting. May I remind the board that, and the community, that you do not have the authority, in fact, you have no higher authority than we do, to have people removed from a public meeting. Your board policies do not circumvent constitutional law. A person would have to be committing a crime in order to be trespassing in the public. The police officers themselves, whom I spoke to personally, were confused as to why they were recently were summoned. I'm almost done. As a taxpayer, I object to such frivolous use of our police officers. This call took them off their important life-saving duties and wasted unnecessary resources. Once the speaker left, you people then scrambled to cover your rears by lying about what really happened. Sean Douglas said the speaker, quote, "ran and raved for 20 minutes until she was removed by the police," which is blatantly false, although it's interesting to note that the president of our school board thinks that reciting laws is equivalent of ranting and raving. Michelle Hayes then dismissed the speaker's serious concerns as totally unwarranted, stating that she, quote, "still chose to come here and make a scene." Let's record reflect the only ones who were guilty of making a scene was your response to the concerned parent. I was truly embarrassed for our community. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Daisy Molls.
Hello.
Hello.
I just had a couple questions. The first question I have is in regards to the Curriculum Review Committee that was supposed to be created as far back as, I think it was October, November, when we were discussing it. I know that it had been arranged at one point and was canceled, and as far as I know, nothing has happened since then. We're almost at the end of the school year, and so I think we could use an update on what's going on with that. I just have a few questions, actually, so I don't know if they can be answered or not. I am not sure if we are on open book as a district, and so I'd like a response on that, if that's something that we've discussed or we are actually using, and if not, why we've chosen not to use open book. And the other question I have is, I know we're having an interim treasurer coming in from ESC, and is, I would, how does that actually look? Like, when, you know, because I'm working with Mike and have some outstanding records requests, and I'm concerned that, you know, we're going to go all the way to August and we're basically not going to have anybody to cover our records. Does the interim treasurer actually handle that sort of thing while he's here for interim? So I'd like a response on that as well, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is William Sizemore.
My name is William Sizemore. My address is 7228 Lake Road here in Madison. On March 17th, 2022, I contacted Michael Vagarello, the treasurer for Madison Local Schools District, by email with a public records request, to which I have yet to receive the information. I am not the only one experiencing difficulty receiving requested public records information. It appears as though Michael Vagarello is resorting to stall tactics in an attempt to run out the clock, so to speak, until May 1st, 2022, which is his last day here. I am bringing this to the attention of this school board so they can rectify this situation. There is a need within this community of residents for transparency and accountability from this school board. A recent public records request regarding monies being spent from our school's coffers was met with resistance by Treasurer Michael Vagarello. One of the reasons cited by him for not providing the information was, quote-unquote, "attorney-client privilege." This reason can lead people to believe there is something of a secretive nature going on that he doesn't want the public to find out about. In an attempt to provide transparency and accountability at each school board meeting, the school board treasurer's report should be read out loud to all people in attendance. The report should include a detailed and itemized statement of all accounts and holdings associated with the Madison Locals School District, to include all incoming monies and all outgoing monies, with a beginning balance and an ending balance, with no exclusions of information from the public, since this is a, quote-unquote, "public school," and the monies were provided by the public. The excuse of attorney-client privilege should only be allowed when and only when the individual person is paying the attorney with their own personal money and not the public money for all costs and associated dealings of a, quote-unquote, "private and/or personal nature." This is a matter that needs immediate attention and action by the school board. The school board has this authority and apparently needs to exercise this authority to direct the treasurer going forward from this moment in time. There is an opportunity for you, the school board members, to put this to a vote today and vote in favor of implementing these things and easily move forward down the path toward the goal of being more transparent and accountable to the residents of this community. This is also an opportunity to show you care and appreciate receiving input and help from the members of this community. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. Reports and recommendations of the treasurer.
Thank you. So, let me address first the public records requests. I'll start with Mr. Sizemore. Not only am I not writing out the clock, I sent him three monthly invoices that showed, according to public records, you know, items are public records unless they're specifically excluded, and attorney-client privilege is one of the exclusions. So, and the record request was for all law firms, attorney names, and legal invoices back to when I started as treasurer. So we're looking at 11 years. So, I know that most of the invoices that we receive from our attorneys are attorney-client privileged and are properly redacted. So I sent him three of those invoices to show what he would actually receive would basically be the amount of each invoice. I then offered a solution that would speed up him getting the same information by offering to actually create a public record to answer a public record, which is not required, but to give him a detailed listing of all of our payments to all of the attorneys for the last 11 years. His response back to me was his original public records request. So what my office is doing is, today, we printed out the list of payments back to 2012, of all the payments that we made to the attorney, and I've got an employee who's going to make the list and start digging them out. Now, I know that we have to make a copy of each of those invoices. I have to go through, I have to redact the attorney-client privilege information, and then I have to make a copy, and then he can come in and look at them. So not only am I not running the clock out, I'm attempting to get him information quicker than we would otherwise be able to. And as far as Daisy's public records request, there is one that has been outstanding for a while. It has to do with all the emails going in between board members, Angela, myself, Dave, to the principals, and in between the health department. So Bob Strudy has been working on the matrix to generate all those, and at last count, we have 11,119 emails. We started the printout of them so they could all be reviewed and make sure that what we are providing not only is a public record, but it's also responsive to her request. And I'm actually happy, she's going to get an email response to some of her stuff today. She'll get it tomorrow. At about 4:30, we discovered a way to print them all to a PDF. So as long as I can review them in PDF form, I can give them to her in PDF form and hopefully at least speed up the time that we get them into her hands. I thought we were going to be printing probably about 7,000 or 8,000 pages. So that'll help speed things up. So, as I told you when I said in my resignation, you know, I'm not running out the clock, and you guys know I'm not. So, as far as that, that's, I just thought I'd answer that because that seemed more like a personal attack and my lack of integrity than anything else.
Mike, what was the Transparency and Government Award that we got last year?
So for two years in a row, the state auditor looks at your response to public records, your adherence to the sunshine laws. It's from, I guess you could turn zero stars to four stars, four or five, whatever it is, we've been ranked the highest in both years. We do take it seriously. Some are quicker to answer. I will tell you, I think the number this morning, prior to what I think are three additional public records requests this morning, we had 15 since January 1st. And some of the work that would be done would have been by an assistant who we are hiring to replace tonight. So I would say that on one of them, it's about as long as I'm comfortable saying it's reasonably being given to her in a reasonable period of time. Everything else is reasonable based on the length of time being requested and the number of records being requested, and the work involved in providing those public records as requested.
Mike, now, I understand the law states that we have to get it to them within a reasonable amount of time. Does the law not state something regarding that the request has to be reasonable as well?
Yes, yes, it can't be overly broad, and if it is, I immediately send an email back that says it's overly broad and, you know, please refine it. None of the requests that I'm currently working on are overly broad.
So, but going back 11 years is not...
No.
That seems like an excessive amount of work on you.
If, okay, the auditor of state, the Ohio Attorney General, are interested in the amount of work, they're interested in providing the public records that are requested, as long as they're specific enough. This request is specific enough as to legal invoices, even though it's for a long period of time. So I will let Mr. Sizemore know that when we get them, the ones back to 2012, I've got to see if we have any more prior to that, because we switched accounting systems back in 2012, we don't have access to those records anymore, so we're going to have to dig through if we haven't disposed of those records in accordance with our public records and record retention schedule. I don't think we have. As I told somebody today, I've wanted to call a records commission meeting to get our records that we are required to retain back within the current retention schedule, but I also have a hard time having a records commission meeting, talking about destroying public records, which we're allowed to do, you know, prior to, you know, if it says it has to be seven years, right now, we probably have 11. I don't like that look when we're having so many public records flow in, public records requests, us going and trying to work back to our retention schedule. So, especially now that I've got one that goes beyond where we should have the records retained, and as long, even though we're only required to have them for seven years, if we have not had the records commissioned and said those can be, you know, destroyed, we have to provide them. So, and that's partly our fault for not meeting, but we won't have that records commission meeting before I'm gone. I don't see the public records request lightening up in my last few weeks here.
So I would encourage anyone who's going to be submitting public records requests, if you really just tell us what you're looking for, it's a lot easier for us to find it. So Mike's not going through 11,000 emails. If there's a particular subject or topic that you're interested in, I would encourage you to include that so it can narrow the search, it'll speed the response from us, and it'll make it a lot less work on the staff who have other jobs to be doing.
And Sean, on that email one, it is specific to a couple of subjects. It's just that...
You got to weed through.
During the COVID time, when you search the keyword "COVID," you get a lot. So that's what's taken so long on that one. So I do have a few things that I want to talk about that aren't on the agenda. Oh, and I guess I'll answer the question. The interim treasurer is a licensed treasurer in the state of Ohio. He will pick up on public records requests where I leave off. Part of what I have to do is a transition plan, and I'm actually doing more, you know, in addition to the official transition plan for the auditor of state, I'm doing a narrative, and I will let him know exactly where I am in the process of everything I've got going on right now, including the three items I'm going to talk about.
Now, they should probably know, though. Mike, you have historically gone above and beyond the law states that we have to provide the records that are requested. It does not state that you have to sit down and explain those records to them, and I'm not sure that the interim treasurer is going to do that. So although he will certainly abide by the law and give the records that are requested, I'm not sure that he's going to be quite as accommodating of what you have been.
Thank you. So the items that I want to talk about are, first, we talked about the school bus purchase grant that we received, $45,000 per bus for a maximum of four buses that we can buy. So this is one of the things that Greg is going to have to deal with after I'm gone, so I'm trying to take care of everything I can before I leave. The bus bids, we bid through the Ohio School Council, so we don't have to do it on our own. We get the buses that we want, but we don't have the cost of bidding, the cost of advertising, nor do we have to do the formal evaluation. We get the bids, we pick what we want, we price it, we go with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. So those are going to be opened by the Ohio School Council on May 2nd. The districts will get the number on May 9th. Buses are going to cost, I hope, only around 100 grand. They may be more. So we have about 55 grand per bus, or $220,000 that we have to come up with, and I've been saying, we don't have a fund that we can tap for 220,000. So, much like when you buy a car, we're going to end up issuing debt to purchase the four buses. We can issue the debt between, for 10 to 15 years, because buses last anywhere from 15 to 20 years. Interest rate right now would be about 3.5%. So, and we will know the final interest rate much closer to when we go to issue. Typically, we would bring the resolution to borrow when we know exactly how much in the interest rates, but as we are looking at a rapidly increasing interest rate environment, it would be better if this board borrowed as soon as they knew the amount of money they would need. So that would be probably the second board meeting in May. But what I'm going to do is bring a resolution to authorize that borrowing to the next board meeting, and it'll just have maximums, a maximum of $300,000 to be borrowed, a maximum term of 15 years. And then when Greg gets the bids in, based on the factors of interest rate and how much the buses are, he can make the final determination of, this is how much we need to bid, and based on, or this is how much we need to borrow, and based on that borrowing, what does a 10-year note cost us each year? What does a 15-year note cost us each year? So I'll get the borrowing set up, he will be the one who will make the final decisions and final recommendations to the board. It would be similar to what we did with the LED lighting project. We would finance it, we would have our bond underwriters take it out to a private placement, much cheaper to do that than, you know, the bonds that we issued for this building went through an official statement, and it was a lot of work and expense, but we're also issuing 20-some million dollars in debt. Here, a $300,000 bond is pretty easy to sell on the open market, and they would sell it for us. So are there any questions on that? I'm actually going to send the memo email to you tonight or tomorrow. So the other two things that may or may not appear on the April 19th board meeting, partly because if I can get the work done, I will. If I can't, then I'll have it ready for Greg to bring in May. That would be the five-year forecast. I really would like to have that finished and presented to the board, because the interim treasurer is not really going to know the numbers. It'll be my last forecast that, you know, I've created, I've made the assumptions, I've put it together. So I'm really hoping to get that to the board in enough time to be voted on in two weeks. And then the final item I'd like to bring to the board, but it's not always up to me, it's the renewal of our property fleet and liability insurance. We've already started the process, we started it earlier this year in hopes that that'll happen. But insurance companies, for whatever reason, don't like to give quotes more than two months out, and that would be May 1st. So we've asked them to move along. There's some things we have to do internally to get a quote for cyber liability insurance, but I'm hoping to make that happen. So I will let you know how we progress on that. Like I said, hopefully, that will be a recommendation for a resolution to be approved in two weeks. Any questions on any of that? Okay. And then that concludes my report. I don't have any action items tonight.
Thank you.
Reports of the administrative team.
First, I will address the Curriculum Review Committee. It's not a curriculum review committee, it is a literature review committee of the books that we are currently using in the middle school and high school. That work will be completed before teachers leave in for the summer and early June. I would plan to reconvene that committee sometime in the next several weeks and bring recommendations to the board for one of our first meeting in June. So that work will continue. We've had a couple setbacks. I was out sick most of last week and, you know, been working to try and regain some strength here, so I hope that answers that question. I do want to just share again the two great events that have returned that they haven't had in the last year, two years. The Mother-Son Spring Fling will be Friday at North. It's for preschool through elementary students. And our father-daughter dance is April 22nd at MHS, and that's sponsored by the Kiwanis, and that's their major fundraiser, and they do a lot of good things for the community. Their theme is Frozen. Information went home with our elementary students. I sent some information out in a community update, but it's going to be a really exciting time for all the little ones and their special people in their lives. We had some really good news today. Preschool licensing finally came through. They have been working through Northeast Ohio in the last several weeks, and Jovette had a clean visit. There was no reason for any corrective action, and as you know, it's been a trying year in preschool with staffing and making sure all the changes in ratios and those kinds of things were compliant. So I want to applaud Jovette and her team on outstanding work this year under very trying circumstances. We are fully underway with state testing in all buildings, elementary through high school, and I shared, I don't, I think with the board, and I'll share it with the community, for seniors... seniors, actually for all students at the high school, the social studies, the science and the math tests will come back in May. So if we had a senior that needed to retake that test in previous years, we wouldn't get those results till June and that wouldn't help them get across the stage. So we're hopeful to get a few more students through intervention across the stage with their test scores coming in in May. So that's exciting. And then we are planning for summer programming for our students, elementary through high school. We've got a variety of things going on. Much like we did last summer, we're going to offer some camps for students. We're going to send some students to the Alliance for Working Together summer camp, as well as having some of our own camps. Our ESL students will participate in their annual camp. We will have some other summer programming at the middle school and some credit recovery at the high school. We are currently staffing those positions and we'll be sending home information with students in the next couple of weeks. And I know Dave is going to talk a little bit about the Ed steps tonight.
Okay. So I want to share with you a new process for us, a new planning process that we've been working on since January. So I, I've been working with our federal programs and with my prior district doing the same for about 17 years. The process has always been, we complete a needs assessment, analyze what our needs are and develop a plan. And the things that we use federal funds for have to be linked to goals and action steps within that plan. New this year is a program the Ohio Department of Education's calling Ed Steps. And it's, it's a process that's actually going to develop a three-year planning cycle for us. We still complete needs analyses, but from those analyses, we'll develop a plan that's going to last three years. This has been, you know, it's billed as something that's going to streamline processes, but I think the first time through, it's just a lot of work. Each building completes a needs analysis, literally hundreds of questions that, that teams answer. It's meant to bring stakeholders together to, to take a look at what are our needs? What are we doing, excuse me, what are we doing well? What, you know, what do we need to improve upon? Once those, those plans were completed, or those assessments were completed, the district took a look at them. And then we developed one for the district based on what the buildings reported were the needs and, and anything else that, that we thought of from a district perspective. So that process has, has been completed now, the needs assessment. The next step is to take those needs and develop them into a three-year plan. And that process will be completed by the end of this month. So more to come on that. Once that's developed, I'll share with you the, the important goals that will go into that three-year plan. It's a three-year plan, but each year we'll do the needs assessment and then we can choose to tweak the plan. If we accomplish, you know, one of the goals or make great strides and want to switch priorities, we have the opportunity to do that along the way. The, the process takes a look at college and career readiness, community and family engagement, curriculum, instruction and assessment, leadership, administration, governance and school climates and supports. And there's just a lot within that that we've taken a look at. It was also very difficult. I mean, it was difficult to be able to find some of the answers to some of the questions that we were asked. And sometimes they were things that we, we think, boy, we really should be looking at that. So it's, it's kind of just going through this the first time is sparking us to say, how do we start to get better with the data that we have to organize that data so that we can make better use of it? And that's, that's kind of been an eye-opener a little bit to say, okay, there's some things we can do better with this that's going to help to guide us a little more. Again, each year, the needs assessment will occur in the second semester and then we will tweak those plans as needed. And our state and federal funds are matched to our, to our plan. So the benefits of this process, I've talked a little bit about, it ensures the involvement of many. Many people will have lent ideas to this process and looked at data. It looks to set our priorities for the district in a more streamlined manner. And instead of kind of reinventing it each year, it gives us a, a three-year cycle and it helps to keep us focused on the priorities. And ultimately, I think it will streamline the process. It just wasn't this year. So again, more information to come as we complete that process, but I wanted to let you know what quite a few people in our district have been working on since January.
Thank you. So may I ask, so the needs assessment part of it is done?
Well, yes, almost. I mean, it was, we completed the questions today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So yeah, from that, we have to kind of, we still have to set which are our big priorities and which are needs, but not our biggest priorities. And that will, that will guide the...
Can you share with us what were some of the needs that were identified for the buildings?
Well, going through each of those sections, there were needs in all of them. You know, I don't think, I don't think we've ever looked at any process and said, nope, we're doing it perfectly.
Oh, sure.
Stick, stick with it. So, well, let me take a look. So for example, today we took, we were talking about school climate and supports. And, you know, we've been working with PBIS, which is a positive behavior intervention support systems within our buildings. All of our buildings use PBIS and work through this as a framework for, you know, helping with building climate. There are very specific pieces of this that the state takes a look at. Are we doing these things? Aren't we doing these things? You know, last year, we celebrated the fact that North and South were bronze level PBIS schools. They had done the, the parts of that program that they needed to do to earn bronze. We're, we're shooting for that with middle school and high school this year. So in, in meeting with Shannon, who oversees this, we talked about some of the needs. The hardest part is all of the things that, that would be great for us to do is finding the time. So as a district, how can we overcome some of the barriers to give us more time, more resources to be able to do the work that's needed to do, to be done, you know, to make those changes? So I think that's just one example. We talked about, like I said, we talked about teaching and learning.
I could give another example.
Yeah.
So I could give an, hello, okay. I can give an example for the special populations. So each of those subcategories that Dave just mentioned, in the instruction, there is a special population. So then what we do is we go through and those special populations include homeless, those who are English language learners, those who are special ed students or economically disadvantaged. And so then you kind of look at how that then also impacts the special education. And so when we were looking, one of the root causes that I came to today, it had to do with our response to intervention. And so when a student is given either a parent, you know, requests an evaluation for a student, we have to do that initial evaluation and then we write the plan. And so what I did over the last, you know, year or two, I looked to see what areas have changed, what has been significant. One of the findings I, I came upon was that more of our students who are going through these evaluations, the initial evaluation, have more behavior challenges. It's not just academic. So typically, students who are, have been, you know, recommended for testing, we go through the batteries of the academic tests, but there's been an uptick in behaviors and that maladjustment, social maladjustment piece when we're actually doing our identification of students. So what I did as a root cause, after doing some thinking and looking, it really does connect to the pandemic. And especially when we're looking at our elementary students and the pre-K kindergarten, for the last two or three years, those students have not had any early interventions. And so right there, that's a, that is, that would, I put, we still have not met as a team, but my recommendation is that that is an area of concern because we still have two or three years that we're going to have these students. And there's been an uptick also in the identification of students with autism. And so trying to figure out, you know, well, what is the reason? Well, you know, we, that is, there's no, you know, root cause, but what do we have to do in order to address those? So that's just, that's some of the...
Thank you.
Another example.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The team has worked very, very hard. It's a real heavy lift, lot of good conversation and, you know, it'll be interesting to see what the plan develops when they populate, you know, the priorities through the plan after this needs assessment. Ready for the recommendations?
Yes.
This evening, under the personnel motion, we're asking you to accept the following resignations. To accept the resignation of Sherry Maraczek, South Elementary kindergarten teacher, effective the end of the contract year. The resignation of Sherry Becher, South Elementary second grade teacher, effective the end of the contract year. To accept the resignation of Shannon Burwald, South Elementary kitchen manager, effective the end of the contract year. To accept the resignation of Jill Short, nutrition services cashier, effective the end of the contract year. To accept the resignation of Matt Johnson, Madison High School co-JV softball coach, effective April 4th, 2022. We're asking you to enter into the following employment contracts. The following substitute teachers is approved by the Educational Services Center of the Western Reserve, under the Madison Local School District Superintendent Noel Bodish, Tristan Cormack, Teresa Smith Hevelin. And the following person as a casual day-to-day substitute, Hannah Wood. And then we're asking you to employ Noel Bodish under a long-term substitute teacher contract from March 29th, 2022 through May 27th, 2022, to perform the duties of Chad Butler, English Language Arts teacher at the high school. To employ Christina Lewis as a building substitute, effective March 14th, 2022. And employ Lindy Woodworth as assistant to the treasurer, effective April 18th, with training dates prior to that, to be paid at the hourly rate in the motion. And the board is amending the following contracts, to amend the personnel service contracts of Holly Barton from Madison High School co-JV softball coach, zero years to Madison High School JV softball coach. And to increase the pay rates of the following custodians, effective January 1st, 2022, Anthony Gencilli and Roy Schli.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I don't know if all of you are aware of this, but Ms. Maraczek and I share a grandchild. So as much as it is going to be sad to see her leave and difficult to replace such a fantastic teacher, she's really wonderful with those kids. My grandson is going to greatly be spoiled and benefit from Mrs. Maraczek's resignation as she is going to go to be with my grandson.
She is a great teacher.
She is.
She's a great teacher.
Amber Alert.
Amber Alert, oh.
Heard something about that.
Any other discussion?
I wanted to add that I've heard through the grapevine, Mrs. Maraczek is going to zoom in and read to Mrs. Cooper's kindergarten kids next year. So she, you know, she still wants to participate in some of the activities.
That's fabulous.
Roll call.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Jean Sensi?
Yes.
Jeff Thompson?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Vote us 4-0.
I'm bringing forward the final motion to approve the school calendar, to approve the school calendars for the 2022-23 school year and the 23-24 school year.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Jean Sensi?
Yes.
Jeff Thompson?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Vote us 4-0.
And under the consent calendar this evening, we're asking you to approve the preschool program tuition rates, including the sliding tuition fee schedule for the 2022-23 school year, effective August 17th, 2022 pursuant to Board Policy 6152. And then we're asking you to approve the programs listed below as found on file in the board office as an educational option of independent study and to approve the participation of the Madison High School students listed below under their respective approved programs, effective the 2021-22 school year.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Jeff Thompson?
Yes.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Jean Sensi?
Yes.
Vote us 4-0.
So the executive session is number one and number four, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. So do we have a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of public employees or regulated individuals, and for preparing for, conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? We will not be conducting any business when we return from executive session. We'll simply be adjourning. Roll call.
Sean Douglas?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Jean Sensi?
Yes.
Jeff Thompson?
Yes.
Vote us 4-0.